Good morning. So we'll open our session with pots and associates. With Zach when he gets online. Good morning, Zach. Not there quite. Nothing yet?
Yeah, now this guy is on our mute, so that tells me that it's possible.
Okay. We'll just give him a couple of seconds here.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
There we are.
Good morning.
I was sitting here, it wouldn't let me off of mute, I'm sorry. Completely my phone and computer's fault, my bad.
No problem. It happens a lot.
No, believe me, yeah, I completely understand. Well, good morning and thanks for taking the time. First, I want to thank you guys for signing on to that letter of support for the frontier counties. It did make it out of the house. But he's complaining. There were a couple of people that voted against it, but we just kind of looked at him and said, okay, fine. We don't really know why, but it was only a couple. So that's a, that's a good start. We're down to, today is the last day for cutoff. Kind of exciting that we're going to get down to really focus. It'll get pretty intense, but we're focusing on stuff. There is a lot of horse trading going on in the background right now. I did put in the report there, several firearms bills still alive. There's several other bills that are kind of coming around that they're going back and forth on. The one that I have, the most recent information, and believe me, it's not five o'clock yet today, so it may change. But the 1%, so 5770, is allegedly dead. So they're not going to move that one. That could change, but over the 7,500 people that signed in opposed to it, which was 94% of the people who actually signed in on the bill, I'm pretty sure that they got the message. And it's relatively unpopular with the citizens to have additional property taxes put on them when people are struggling as it is. So I think that kind of also leads to comments about the tone of the, of the legislature right now. As we're doing this, the, especially the majority party right now is flat out saying, we are expecting that all of those initiatives are going to pass. They, they are planning on every one of the initiatives to pass and losing all of their dollars that they've got out there in revenue. So they're acting accordingly this year. Next year should be real fun. They're basically saying, we either A, have to find some new revenues, or God forbid, start cutting some things, which they definitely don't want to do. But they'll be more inclined to do that next year when it's not an election year. So that is having a huge, huge effect on what they're doing right now. I know that, you guys, I don't know if you're interested, super interested or not, but that House bill, or Senate bill 5843, that's the security breaches, election systems, election related systems. A couple of the counties are pretty interested in that with respect to the Albert censors. I know you guys have one and didn't mind, but I thought I'd bring that up. Grant County and Lincoln County submitted letters to the legislature saying, hey, please oppose this. Came out of the Senate with only three nay votes, so it's going to be hard to get in front of. The other thing with this one, not, not necessarily that one, but the detached ADU bills. They're probably going to move 6029. It probably won't affect you guys very much. It really is permissive, just takes 1337 from last year, which was inside the UGAs, and it expands it to outside the UGAs. So that's the big stuff. We're not seeing a lot right now move on property tax re, things like that. Personal property tax versus real property. We're probably going to have to have that conversation over the interim here to address that with the renewable energy stuff. Nobody wants to touch any of the hot button topics right now. So that's kind of a little bit of a hindrance for what we really want to see, but that's kind of where we sit this year. Any of the really, really inflammatory bills are pretty much either being gutted or they're dying. So if you guys have any questions or specific bills that you guys have looked at or issues that you're concerned about after cutoff here?
Zach, can you talk a little bit more about the repercussions of the initiatives passing, specifically the, the, the carbon? And what happens if that gets repealed for all the money they've already raised on it?
Well, that's a really good question. I, I should have just spoke to that because I get that question every time. You know, in, in ideally, the extra money that they've received, you know, there's quite a bit of excess right now. They're trying to figure out what to do with it. They're fighting over the stuff that they've already collected. Do not plan on that ever coming back. I, I don't think, I, I think they're basically just going to say, well, sorry, we already spent it with losing, you know, all of the taxes that are, you know, future taxes that they had planned on. They passed this stuff and thought, oh gosh, it's going to be great. We're going to be able to balance our, well, have more money to do what we want to do. Basically, it's just going to take a bunch of money out of the budget. We're not going to see, I don't think, very much money back. Certainly, if the money comes back, it's going to go to the citizens. It's not going to go into, into any of our coffers or into any of the programs that we could use at the local level to benefit our people. But I, I would say that in the next couple of, couple of years, there's going to be some serious, serious budget conversations. And realistically, the only, only solution that even makes any sense, because they've kind of hit their limit, I think, in terms of raising money. They're going to start have to have, having to have that really difficult, uncomfortable conversation about where do we cut? You know, where do we slow down our spending? Where, what, what do we bring back? You know, and Commissioner Danfle had a really interesting comment yesterday when I talked to Ferry County. When he was working for the feds, they did a kind of a budget optimization exercise where they looked at, you know, okay, hey, for, for Project X, there are on the budget, maybe 20 full-time employees. Then they went back to the agency, how many people actually work on this? Oh, five? Wow, okay, so that's, that's 20% of what you said was on it. So then they start shrinking the budget in that way. What they chose to do at the federal level was not lay workers off, but they used it kind of as an attrition management tool. So when somebody retired or left or whatever, they just didn't replace that individual. That's kind of a slow.
Yep.
Are you muted?
Uh-oh. Your mute's not behaving today.
Do we have the ability to unmute someone?
No. Oh, Zach, you there?
Oh, I, I'm here. How about this? Let's try that. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I just shut the Zoom meeting down and I'll stay connected with my cell phone. But, but long story short, Ecology went through that exercise here about 12 years ago. And it pulled Ecology's budget back by about 40%. Because they, they had way more FTEs appropriated to projects than what they actually had on the project. So maybe that's an option. I don't know what the fallout of this is going to be, but it will be extreme. So especially since the, you know, the citizens of the state are saying, hey, we are done paying taxes. We don't want, don't want to do this. You're not going to tax our business. We're not going to do an income tax, capital gains tax, et cetera.
Zach, the ADU bills, those only affect RCW 3670A, right? So us partially planning counties, it has no impact on?
No, it, it wouldn't have. I, whoo. I'm going to have to look. There was an amendment on the Senate bill. I'll have to look at that because one of the things that they were talking about with the Senate bill was basically just making it blanket countywide for planning and non-planning counties. So they are partially planning. So I will look at that. I don't know if they hung that one or they actually decided to continue on with that. But I, I will look at that and get back with you for sure. I'll, I'll, I'll ask. So, but as the last one I saw, it, it would be a fully planning county. So you'd have, it wouldn't be you guys.
That's good.
And then the last one that's come up multiple times in the county is House Bill 2027 and 5905. These are the additional requirements and training for sheriffs and marshals. Both of those are dead, correct?
Yeah. So what we're going to be looking at on those ones, they're talking about just doing it through budget proviso.
So they may-
Not, not certifying background checks, but, but actually providing more training through a budget providers, proviso.
So they keep some of it, but eliminate a lot of the requirements?
Eliminate the requirements, but put money towards it.
Okay.
So they make the, and, and what they're specifically talking about, and Juliana was talking about this at the last steering committee. They're talking about adding a couple, two or three or four classes or something at the training academies to open up some more training, both for new officers and for continued training for existing officers.
Got it.
So just making it available. That said, right now, they're here, it, it sounds like they're shooting, hoping for half of what we would really like to see in terms of availability. So in other words, don't expect much.
Well, anything that'd get more, more trainings a year through the academies would be great.
Yeah, without the, the, you know, more burdensome requirements and backgrounds and all that stuff. I, I think they're pretty sufficient as it is there.
I think we have a question for you, Zach, from Mr. King.
Yes, if I may. Jeff King, Clickidat County, Director of Emergency Management for the county in all three cities in the county. Zach, are you aware of SB 6164? Do you have any knowledge of that?
Um, yeah, the county emergency management plans. I, we haven't been following it super close. But I, I can answer some questions on it, I'm sure.
Now, the Washington State Emergency Management Association just sent an email making all of us in the state aware of it last Thursday. And it is concerning. I think it will have significant impact on local emergency management organizations in, in its current form. There is, our association is going to put forth some amendments for proposal. Even in that, what I've seen of that, I would not support it. What do you know of it? I know it's gone through the House and now it's in the Senate.
This one, what I know about it is that it, it looks really good, I mean, in terms of messaging. We haven't heard a lot in terms of pushback on it because what we've heard is, oh yeah, hey, this, this just looks kind of like it's a, you got to notify people when there's a spill. Think, you know, that big train crash or, or something back east, right? There was really not anybody signed in opposed to the thing as they went through it. So this is definitely something that we're going to have to backpedal on a little bit if we want to get out in front of it in the House.
Yeah, it's now on our radar and, yeah, I don't, like I said, in its current form, it's absolutely does not have my support. It would cost us a lot more time, energy and resources. The way it's currently written and even with the amendments, I would support it. We already do these things and to be required to do them without, you know, any additional funding and staffing would be untenable. And, and it is in the details of the wording and the definitions, you know, according to RCW, of what that would mean for us.
Yeah, it came out of the Senate with-
And they can, they can-
It came out, nobody opposed.
Well, that's too bad.
I, I, do you have, if you can, or have put together some sort of a write-up or little informative, even bullet points that you could send to me for talking points, I'd be happy to message that.
Yep, I'll get your email and forward on the Wassima notification. Thank you.
That, that would be, that'd be great. No problem.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
So Zach, being that that's already been through the House Committee and Innovation Community Economic Development, and it's already for executive session, there's not a whole lot left we could do on that, right?
On what you can do in executive session, they, they could put a, an amendment on it before it comes out of committee or a floor amendment. That, that's basically your options outside of killing it.
Right.
So the, the amendment is a Wagner bill, so we'd probably want to start there with the amendments. And it, you know, without duplicating efforts, I'll, I'll probably have to talk to the association, see what they're doing with it. See what we can do. So I'll do whatever I can to help.
Okay.
So any other questions or issues that are high on the visibility list at the moment?
I think we're good.
All righty. Well, thank you very much. We'll chat with you again as always. Just call or email, text anytime. And I'll look for that email on this bill so that I can see what we can do on 6164.
Yeah, thanks for your help on that.
Of course. Thank you, guys, and we'll talk to you later.
Thanks.
All right.
Okay. It's 9:03 and I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the county, Clickidat County Commissioners. Let the record show, all three commissioners are present. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we're looking for approval of the business agenda.
Are there any additions?
I have.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we approve the business agenda as presented.
I will second.
Motion is seconded and a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. There are no meeting minutes for our approval today, so we'll move on from that. And that takes us to public comment. So we have people in the room that are invited to come forward and identify yourself, and you have three minutes. And also those on Zoom will recognize you if you raise your hand and identify where you are and who you are. So we'll start with in the room.
One thing to also remind everyone, please do not provide comments on the franchise agreement with Click Networks or the Title 12 public hearing. Those will be heard af, this afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you. So anybody in the room would like to come forward?
Good morning. Go ahead and sit.
Yeah, please.
Let me know when I can start.
Go right ahead.
My name is Sean Oliver. I'm a resident here. I live at 24 Pine Ridge Road. I bought the property about four and a half years ago, retired three years ago, and have been pretty much there 90% of the time over the last two years. Unfortunately, I've had to call the sheriff's office regarding neighbors' dogs that are barking uncontrollably. And I'm not a nitpicky individual. I have a black German Shepherd. I, she barks, but she knows when to stop. This, in this particular instance, though, I've been dealing with it. And then, like I said, I'll go back. I had to call the sheriff's office because I had no other options. And it's been documented. Deputies have witnessed the nuisance violation. I just want to clarify the nuisance that I'm here regarding is 6.20.050 regarding dogs barking. There are exemptions, but these dogs do not fit the exemptions. I made it pretty clear to the sheriff in person and through numerous emails. He told me he was going to look into it. He is, over the last two months, had that timeframe, has not done anything. It's gotten worse. And I just want to clarify, this dog's barking is not just for 15 minutes. It's not 20 minutes. It's hours on end. I have examples. I'm not going to play it for you, but it's irritating. I believe as a citizen here, I have the right to peace, and I'm not having peace. And I'm already doubting whether or not to invest any further in my property. I've spent a lot of money already trying to improve the land. And at this point, I don't see why I should go any further because I can't live with this. And I just think the reason I'm here is ask the commission to think about enacting animal care and control because sheriff's office has other, more important responsibilities. I am a retired law enforcement officer from Florida. I did 22 years in law enforcement. I came here to live a peaceful life. I don't like calling the sheriff's office. I didn't want to, but I had, it was a last resort. I think animal care and control should be implemented in this county so that people like me have someone to call. Maybe it won't get resolved, but the sheriff's deputies have more priorities than dealing with this. That's why I'm not birding the sheriff anymore. I'm just hoping the county commission can look into this, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Okay, um, so moving to Zoom, is there anyone online that would like to make comment?
Bob is unmuted.
Bob, you're unmuted. Would you like to speak?
Okay, there I am. If you'd guess, I want to talk a little bit about the appeal that's been-
Oh, we can't, I'm sorry, we can't talk about litigations or appeals?
Okay.
Okay.
Then I guess I'm done.
Sorry. Yeah, we just have our rules we have to live by.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a commissioner too. I, I get it.
Okay, thank you.
So when can I speak to it, to that? Will there be a hearing?
There will be a process in one.
There will be a process and it'll be announced for public comment.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, then for now, thank you for your time. Bye.
Thank you. Bye. Anyone else on Zoom?
We've got 4098.
4099?
98.
98, sorry.
Hello?
Are you there? Hi.
Can you hear me?
Hi, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Yes. Yes, this is Dennis White. I live at 367 Oak Ridge Road, Houston, Markington. And I just wanted to make a comment about last week's commissioners meeting. During, during that meeting, Commissioner Christopher requested that the, that the letter the county received, recently received from the White Salmon Valley School District be discussed. If I, if I listened to that correctly, Commissioner Zoller voiced that the letter should not be discussed because the county is involved in litigation over the undercanvass development. As chair, if I remember correctly, Commissioner Zoller chose to defer to the prosecutor for an opinion or to decide the matter. Today, I'd like to know the disposition of the letter. Has the prosecutor provided the board direction regarding discussion of the letter? If not, when might that happen? Did the prosecutor decide the letter shouldn't be discussed? Then I think the board owes, owes their constituents an explanation of why not. It's my opinion that there is no discretionary reason that would be in the public's interest why this letter should be protected from discussion by the board. The letter is one, written on behalf of the school district patrons who with their property tax dollars support the district. And two, specifically states the district's concerns over safety of bus-transported schoolchildren on Oak Ridge Road. And three, it actually solicits the board's response. How can the board respond without discussing the letter? Are you going to just ignore it? That would be a breach of your duty, I, it would seem. Or are you going to try and appease the district behind the scenes out of the public view? If this isn't the game plan here, then get on with discussion of the letter and respond to the district in writing on how and when its concerns will be addressed. Your constituents, I think, deserve transparency over this issue. I'd like to thank Commissioner Christopher for his attempt on getting this letter discussed. And I'd also like to remind you in closing that this letter, well, let me back up, that the record on the undercanvass litigation is closed, okay? Can't get anything else in the record. This letter is not part of the record. So it doesn't, it, it just doesn't, there just doesn't seem to be a rationale for why the board cannot discuss this letter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Back in the room. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward today? Just visiting. So Zoom, do we have anybody else with a hand up? 7211.
Greg Wagner, cease. After listening to last week's discussion, it's obvious that this board does not understand the CEPA process and its role that you play in the process. Anderson stated, the board needs lessons and training in CEPA process because they may be the quasi-judicial decision-making body in upcoming CEAPAs. So therefore, I believe that until this board receives the training and lessons required to make you qualified to make a determination on CEPA, that no CEPA should come before this board, nor should any CEPA go to a hearing examiner as undercanvass did. Because Mr. Anderson has always said, let's keep it local for local control. Let's trust the process. We all must play by the same rules. So we don't want this to go outside for somebody else's decision. We want to keep it local, don't we, Mr. Anderson? So let's not use that as a cop-out and send it to a hearing examiner so you have plausible deniability when it comes back on you and people say, you messed it up. Because then you can say, no, it was the hearing examiner. It's time for this board to step up and do their job and not hide like you have. You know, this whole process of what Mr. Christopher was talking about on favoritism, basically, why does the citizens get to comment before a CEPA and another one they get to comment after? This whole thing could be resolved if the citizens were involved during the pre-submission plan conference that they have with the applicant and the county employees that are involved, the various departments. If the citizens were involved right then and you heard their opinions and their concerns, that may stop this, any project from moving forward, wasting valuable county staff time and endangering the county for lawsuits. Because the longer you allow things to go on, like the undercanvass project, all you do is set the county up for, for a lawsuit. And that's on you, the board's responsibility. The comprehensive plan, the, the master plan of the county state, you are to encourage local participation. That's the citizens. We get to participate and people get to make comments, and then you turn around and ignore everything we say. Our concerns go unheeded, just like the undercanvass project. That's a big debacle and you know it, and you are part of the problem. Mr. Anderson made sure he had to recuse himself for some bad actions that he did by going to the camp, undercanvass facility in Glacier. That's a big no-no. He recused himself, and then all this has to go to the hearing examiner, even though there was still two commissioners available, and that constituted a quorum. It should have never went to a hearing examiner, cost the county a bunch of money, cost the appellant's a lot of money, and this is just a waste of taxpayers' money. And this is typical of this county. That's all you do. You put us in danger every time. And you talk about lawsuits, but you let it continue to happen. All right.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room for a comment? No one changed their mind? And on Zoom, any other hands raised today? And on Zoom, any other hands raised today? Good morning, Sherry.
Are you unmuted? There you are. It takes a minute to click through these things. Good morning, commissioners. First off, I do want to thank you for your role that you do do. I think that sometimes it gets confused that when the citizens speak about things happening that upset us and really what our role of our government should be. And from what I understand, that our government was formed to protect the inalienable rights of the people. And every law and statute and codes and rules and all that stuff, ordinances, it always says for the health, safety, and general welfare of the people. And so I want to believe that we can get to a point where we can start really, really respecting the inhabitants who do live and play and work and all that stuff here. And, you know, about the SEPA situations. Thank you, Commissioner Christopher, for bringing up that there's different processes for different SEPAs and that I've seen that to be true myself in the last five years. And Greg is right. A new RCW 19711, no, excuse me, WAC 197-11, RCW 36.70 and 43.21. There's a lot of, you know, a lot of words in there, a lot of instructions, and it does definitely say to reach out to the public. So before any determination is made, and it's a big thing that can affect people, like with undercanvass real quick. We, I live in Houston. We had Houston-BZ community council meetings. It was right after COVID started, and we had a Zoom meeting. And 30-some people were on that call. I couldn't believe it. And so many people commented in our community meeting that undercanvass is a detriment to that location. The road cannot sustain it. They can't get the water, blah de blah. So the community, Mr. Anderson told you, at that time, he was on the call. You were on the call, Mr. Anderson. We aired our concerns of the placement of this small village of hundreds of cars. And now we're ignoring a school letter? Come on, these are the children. These are the children, guys. You know, let's not ignore this stuff. I get that some corporations want to come in and do what they want to do and lay on that they found, but when it doesn't fit, don't let it go any further. Because now we've wasted how many tens of thousands of dollars of county money? Forget the private citizens, really. I mean, we're the ones spending our money to fight against our county. But how much county money? Every taxpayer in this county should be aggrieved by this. How much county resources and money has been spent to fight against the citizens who say, "We don't want to die on a road because you put a small village of hundreds of transient tourists that don't know what they're doing on that road that cannot do it, and children and school buses? Come on." So where this stops at the pre-submission hearing or conferences. When the projects don't fit, say it then, and then we don't get ourselves in legal trouble. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. I'll ask in the room again, but I know better. So Zoom, anyone else today? Just raise your hand and we recognize you. 2662.
Hello, commissioners. This is Tracy McCune. I'm from Lyle. And I have brought the subject up before, but I'd like to re-bring it up. Your mapping system, the interactive mapping system that was overseen by Public Works, who's in charge of the GIS for Quikwick County. On the bottom right-hand side, there's a little blue link that's called Leaflet, L-E-A-F-L-E-T. When I click that link, it takes me to a site in the Ukraine. So it says Leaflet was created 11 years ago by Vladimir, a Ukrainian living in Kiev. And I still cannot understand this, nor can I get your attention on this, of why Quikwick County mapping of any sort or properties would be connected to a Ukraine site here. So I'd really like comment on that today, especially since we're considering franchising and all that, which I will not discuss. The other thing I'd like to discuss is, you know, I'm a victim of this communications that are not through a licensed broadband station, a radio station. You know, like the one in the DOWs that Click uses. It's the Dow station. It's an Oregon station. It is not a Washington station. Even though it says it's in Golden Dale. It is not. Click is not in Golden Dale. So I am a victim of this because I, you know, things happen to my things. Like, for instance, I got a response from the franchise from Public Works on January 29th, and that was the last email I will ever receive. That email account no longer works. This is not the first time this has happened, and nor will it be the last. But that is because a person in the community that is in charge of your communication, one of the people here in Lyle, has connected himself to my computers. This will be done with everybody's devices if the county is able to do their communications with a non-licensed broadband station, a radio station. We know this. DNR, I'm just getting ready to file with the FCC some information from DNR. They are now saying that Quikwick County communication is from Ellensburg. So is Quikwick County now part of Ellensburg? I don't think so. Well, that's what DNR is saying. So if Jeff King would like to add something to this, now, I think the commissioners should have some concern about the internet being down in Golden Dale. I read the front page of the paper, and it said that...
Thank you, Tracy. I'm sorry. Thank you. Magic moment, but thank you for calling in. Anyone else on Zoom? We'll give it a couple of seconds and move through our day. We had a lot of comments today. I appreciate it. One last chance. Anyone on Zoom would like to raise their hand? We'll recognize you. So, hearing none, we'll allow the commissioners to comment if they would like to. Mr. Christopher?
Thank you. I do have a few comments today. To Mr. White, all I can say to you is that I agree. I think this board needs to take up the letter and deliberate and give a response to the school district. The separate comments about the public comment on SEPA, again, I agree with you, which is why I brought it up. If we can take public comment before we do the decision on the SEPA or we can take public comment after we do the decision on the SEPA, it only makes sense to me that we do them all evenly. We do them all fairly, and we do them all before. And I will continue to push to change county policy to do that with my one vote. To Sherry, discussing the health, safety, and welfare of the community, I would like to add that every vote I take is with the concern of the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Unfortunately, in politics, sometimes you have powerful people, special people that think they're above the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And yeah, they normally get their way. Not on my watch, but we'll see how that goes. Tracy, we've already discussed that we do not own the website that you're referring to. And so we do not control the links on the website that you're referring to. The rest of your commentary, you're going to have to explain a little better because a lot of it did not, unfortunately, did not make a lot of sense to me. So keep going on that with a better explanation if you would like to next week. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you for everyone for calling in and your comments. There was a lot of information provided. And Mr. Oliver, the docking, barking dogs and the ordinance is something I think this board needs to have further conversation on with regards to our codes. And it has been brought up multiple times over the past. Mr. Wagner, thank you for your comments. I'm trying to parse through them to figure out what I can and cannot respond back. Citizens involved during the pre-submission plan or conference, that is something that the county and no county has ever done. Those pre-submission conferences are between an applicant and the county. And much of that conversation, I mean, when you're in all things, in business and government, or at least in business, competition is real, and there's things that you don't want out in the general public or things that you're not ready to release to the general public. Inviting people in on a pre-submission conference when they might not have their project fleshed out does not make much sense at all because when you come in for a pre-submission conference, you're saying, "Hey, I have an idea. I'm thinking about doing this. What do I need to worry about whether or not this is going to go forward?" Getting the community riled up about something that may or may not move forward is something that we actually have information on now because Public Works is, or planning has been able to get us the number of pre-submission conferences versus the number of actual applications. And so there's a lot of people that come in for conversations that it goes nowhere. There is the process, and the process is enshrined in statute. The process is, has been working successfully for the last many decades. When we make changes to the process, there's also unintended consequences. Much of the process is either in RCW or in WAC, and we can't make changes to that. So asking for things to change, there are small things that we can do differently, and I think there are things that we can do better. As for telling someone, "No, you can't do that" in the pre-submission conference, the county's job is to process applications. This county has been a private property rights county and believes in private property rights for many, many decades since it was formed. Because you don't like something does not mean that somebody does not have the right to do it on their property. Because you do not like something does not mean that we, as a board, can just say, "No." We have to have reasons and rationale and the legal ability to say no to someone. And that is the difference between our quasi-judicial functions when, in essence, we act as a hearings body or the judges. And so we have to take that very seriously, and we cannot be biased. We cannot show our biases. And if we have any conflicts of interest, we have to let those be known. On our legislative capacity, so, which is different. And our legislative capacity is when we actually say what you can and cannot do through zoning on your property, and that's a different process. This board has exercised that process to make changes. But once you have the right to do something on your property, we can't then take it away from you unilaterally. That's, the system exists for a reason. And Ms. McCune, we have discussed previously, the LEAF program is an open-source software program that many of the largest companies and technology firms in the US use. It is open source. That means that person does not get any money for it. It is powered by Esri, which is a large company that we do contract with for parts of our mapping system. So while I did take a look at that, and I don't think that we can take that off our system or off of our webpage because they are linked to Esri, and that's the open source which saves us all money by not having to pay a third party for much of that coding language. But I can absolutely see why it can be a little convoluted. With regards to your comments on Click, so there is Click Networks, which we cannot speak about. And then there's KLCK, which I think is what you were talking about when you were mentioning the radio. Those are two completely different organizations and companies. I just want to make that very clear. And if you could send an email with what you were trying to explain with regards to DNR and Ellensburg, I don't, I, along with Commissioner Christopher, did not quite understand where you were going with that.
Thank you. Anything else?
Oh, that's funny.
So I'll try, I have a lot to say, but I'm going to try to keep it concise and short. Mr. Oliver, thank you very much, and you are on the list. We're going to look into some things for you. With the comments about litigation, SEPA, the pre-submission applications, there is so much misinformation there and misconception about what those processes are. And they're put in place, basically, the way I see them, as a tool for the planning department. And they're valuable tools to get them up and running to understand the pitfalls or how we can go forward or how a landowner can go forward with a project. And their pre-submission, they have nothing to do with the end outcome of yes or no on the permit. They're just a very beginning level of what the planner can start understanding of how to drive those applications and help those people move forward if we can. So to interject into the SEPA, I believe that is not the county commissioner's place. That is a tool that is used within our planning department, a valuable tool for them. So it's kind of a fruitless conversation to say that we want to change something that, like Mr. Anderson says, has driving RCWs on how they're used. Moving forward from that, I reassure you, so many times I'm frustrated with we're getting into processes or questions or changing things, and we need to get our eye on the ball of what is that costing our county? What is that costing for time and effort of our employees? The other work they're not getting done because something was brought up that needed to be changed, that was a new idea. We have to start responding to those carefully before we make them into a full-blown thing that we all put our time into. As far as commenting on the letter from the White Salmon School District, that is not off my radar. That is part of the conversation, but litigation is a very sticky situation. I am not an attorney, and it was said here today, it's my opinion several times. I'm not willing to pretend I'm an attorney and wield my opinion. I'm going to reach out constantly and qualify legal counsel to make sure I'm talking about the right thing because you could not only damage a case one way or the other, you could get good information thrown out because you've commented somewhere where you shouldn't. And so I will tread lightly. I did inherit undercanvass. It was full-blown and ongoing before I got here. I'm doing my best to work through it at the base legal place where it stands right now. So thank you. That's it for my comments today. Thank you very much. So the consent agenda with 10 items.
Madam Chair, we have before us the consent agenda with 10 items. My motion is to approve.
All second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes with 10 items. So payroll, certification, and payment approval?
I will be happy to make the motion. I do remember on the radio that you mentioned that you wanted us to come in on Mondays to discuss the bills and comment on the bills, and so I want to make sure that I'm not making a motion that you haven't had time to look at or if you have anything you want to discuss before I make the motion.
No, there is not. What I was looking for was to set up a regular working order for the county commissioners for at least three days a week for a payroll and certification and bill day to go through everything together at a table on a workshop. And then our regular workday, it would take some long-winded conversations off of our plate on a regular workday for the county commissioners for our business agenda. And then we could move to Thursdays for a regular workshop every Thursday, but we haven't gotten there yet. I do come in and look at the bills and work through my things on Mondays, as I'm hoping someday the board will do. But for now, that's, I'm fine. And if I have something ever, I will bring it forward to you.
Well, if I also look at the bills, I know... Well, if, I, I also look at the bills. I know Commissioner Anderson is looking at bills. I don't know that there's ever discussion. I don't know that we need to schedule half a day to, uh, talk about bills when we don't have anything to talk about here currently. If there's ever something to talk about, I would be more than happy to schedule time to talk about it. And that's the end of my comments. I'm ready to make the motion when the board is ready.
If you'd like to make a motion, go ahead.
Okay. Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and seventy-four cents. And the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of nine hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents for the date ending February twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Uh, motion approved for payroll warrant and certification. Department updates and we have Lori Anderson in the room from the planning department. Thank you, Lori. Another week. I mean, I'll still be here. There's a countdown of twenty-one days. Yes, you will be here. You're not leaving us. No, no escaping.
So, kind of a shorter update. I mean, we have lots and lots going on. Planning Commission next Tuesday because Monday's holiday, we'll be meeting. And hopefully we'll get through chapter one of the draft critical areas ordinance. And then we'll obviously move on to the following chapters. Request for proposals, as noted previously, we had two of them. They've been scored. And now, um, getting some direction from Public Works of moving forward with that. The Wilson Monroe rezone in the Snowden vicinity, um, the prosecuting attorney, there's the applicants have attorneys, so prosecuting attorneys, uh, giving us direction and how to proceed with the CIPA appeal. The Rummel Lambert conditional use permit, they're doing a traffic study. We should have that back soon.
What is that one, by the way? What?
It's a doctor's office in the Trout Lake area on Stoller Road. And, um, just due to the increase in traffic with the average daily trips, a traffic study is required. Not that it's going to be significant, but it met the threshold under current Title XII, so.
Would it meet the threshold under the adopted title of the, uh, new Title XII?
If the new Title XII is adopted, it would fall well below the threshold. So.
So are if, if they've put in an application, if we adopt the new Title XII, do they, are they still required to do the traffic study?
From the way I understand, from the date they submitted the application, they would have to go by those regulations, but.
Or reapply.
Or reapply, yes.
Okay. And they knew going into it that, you know, we've been working with them since, as prior to Thanksgiving. And they knew, knew Title XII was in the works, but we didn't know exactly when and they wanted to proceed. So.
Okay.
And, and they have the right to do that. So we, we do. So moving on from that, this week we'll probably have one short plot with CIPA to be routed. And then we still have a lot of pending projects. We have received for the Smith RV Park in the Housam area that will access directly off of Highway one forty-one. We have received, um, updated drawings and stuff from their engineer. So we'll hopefully be able to get that out soon. And again, we still have all the other pending issues. And busy times in planning and looking forward to March when our new director comes and certainly if you have questions, we'll try to answer them.
I think you're doing really well. This is a lot shorter than it was in the beginning. You're making progress.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, for example, our pre-sub and, you know, some of the permits we've been processing. Now that you've gotten the information, figured we do that on a monthly basis or, you know, the first, first of each month update, like how many pre-sub's and what we had them for, how many complete applications and all have come in. Yeah. So.
Good.
It's all a work in progress.
I would like to question the board whether they still think these weekly meetings, um, are needed. Uh, I know that Lori probably puts a lot of time and effort into making the presentation every week. Uh, and I know for me, I am okay if we want to go every two weeks. To have these meetings, but I thought I'd bring it up to the board if they, if they still thought weekly was needed.
I would like to have weekly. I appreciate it and I love hearing from all the departments and, um, it seems like you've kind of got a pattern down and are keeping track.
They'd say, being that we're going to have a new director here shortly, um, keeping the weeklys is just probably fine. And when the new director starts, I'd like to continue to have those discussions weekly with, so, um.
Yeah.
But if you want to skip next week, I'm fine with that too.
Well, I'll be here or, you know, be upstairs. So, uh, whatever you prefer, just let me know. I'll be here or be upstairs and we'll do whatever we need to do. Thank you.
Okay.
And have a great day and all.
Thank you. Okay. Would we like to move to Public Works or do you want to do commissioner update? Let's, yeah, Public Works is at the table. You're not shy. Yeah, you did.
Said eight forty-five. Lisa's already told me I had a beep prompt.
We better mind her. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi Seth.
Morning.
Right ahead.
Okay, ours will be fairly quick, I believe. We've already went through the consent agenda. We have two public hearings today at one o'clock and, uh, takeoff?
Uh, we have one project currently in construction is the crushing project. They're currently crushing in Badger Gulch and getting ready drilling or blasting in Mattson quarry. On road design, the annual striping contract is currently on ad and we'll be opening bids next Tuesday. Sunday old eight, we're getting ready to get that out to add. Data collection ball banking, the consultant is still crunching the data. Uh, bridge repair bundles. We've got a ad out for obtaining consultants. Those proposals are due next Tuesday as well. And other preliminary work continues on upcoming projects.
Okay, on the maintenance side, east side, we're spot graveling, maybe cleaning some ditches. Mowing if we get a chance in Alderdale and brushing. And, uh, hopefully not, but it appears we could have some winter weather coming tomorrow. West side, uh, brushing, patching holes with cold mix, um, grading in holes, not actually grading. It's a little bit too wet, but we're grading, uh, gravel roads filling holes with a grader. Cleaning culverts and like I said, winter mix. On the facility side, um, the jail replacement, their punch list is ongoing. They're still working on it. The contractor is here working on it, spear court, small contracts, small works contracts should be to the board next week. Work is scheduled to start April fourth. The events, just the birthday party in February and then winter riding is ongoing and then we start our more event scheduled in March. Fuel Island, we're waiting for the final in, uh, from the consultant. Auditors, uh, floor covering bids are due this week. Taping and texturing is about all we got, but our carpenter is actually working on some of the damage we had in mannequins four. Now, so they pulled off that. HVAC, the contracts were awarded today at the pioneers for the Pioneer Center. Thank you. Like we said, storm damage, we're still cleaning up after that, doing sheetrock and everything. We submitted something. We'll see if the state files. Radio, still working on the camera and, uh, for a couple of follow-ups. For the procedures, I just, it depends on which way I write them for the board. I need to know if the board is going to, for Title XII. The other one's pretty straightforward. Are you going to open it back up for public comment? That's strictly up to the board for Title XII, but if you are, I need to know if you're not. I also said, I'll write the procedures however you want. They've had plenty of, people have plenty of opportunity. I mean, hurt doesn't matter either way. But we have the final document today.
Is there, sorry, can I? Is there a way to write two documents so we can decide based off how much comment we get?
Well, I was just for the procedural thing. I was going to.
But it, my question is, can we word the procedural as we can, may or may not leave the record open? I'd hate to make, I would hate to make a decision right now and then have three hundred comments and have already said no uh, or something. So that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Right, right. Um, we can do that. I mean, we are preparing it as with an ordinance to hopefully pass it. It still doesn't take effect till March first. So there would, there would still be, I guess, quite a bit of time if they wanted. We've take, like I said, we've taken comments for over two years now, so, which we'll cover more. I want to get into the, I, I, I won't get into that. At least we'll be yelling at here soon.
She throws things.
Yeah. So I can, I can leave it kind of vague and then, because there's a point where the chair asks for public comments at the hearing.
Mr. Anderson.
My, my request would be is that we do have this as a public hearing. I think the board has, uh, while we have had a public hearing in the past, we've made substantive changes, um, as a board and it's only right to, to have it as a public hearing.
Yes, you still have to have it as a public hearing. I just wanted to know if you wanted to allow comments from the public because a lot of time, you know, like the sixth year, the final sixth year, it's closed for public here, the last, the, when you adopt, you don't allow any more comments.
Are you, so I guess my thought would be is, is we hear public comments today. We leave the record open until Sunday and we direct staff to have the ordinance prepared for next week, um, for adoption.
Okay.
Would be my thoughts.
And I think that's what we had talked about one other time too.
Okay.
We were at that conclusion.
Okay, um, that answers that question. And.
And granted, that was not a decision by mine. That was, that was just a thought of how it would likely go based on the comments we hear. It could go a different direction.
Right. Right. Uh, okay. I have one more thing and that is our equipment supervisor retired. It's one position, you know, we kind of, we always weigh, can we do without? And right now, all the supervisors are picking up the pieces. And the problem is, is each one of the supervisors is responsible for certain things. And without having somebody in charge, that means I don't have somebody in charge of the shops. And it's not a good place to be because they're also in charge of our fuel and everything else. That's one position that would be very hard for us to work around without. So my ask is can we backfill that position?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm fine with it. Maybe, maybe, I mean, you need, you need somebody to manage.
Yes.
But maybe as you promote your way up, you might find another spot that maybe does.
We are looking at another spot as we speak.
And you're always very considerate. I appreciate.
We are looking at another, uh, some more spots. We'll, when that comes, we'll be bringing that. I think that's all we have.
Was easy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioners Oliver, did you get a new email with that signature?
I did. It'll be back to you today.
I, I have one question. I was, um, speaking with a longtime county resident that brought to my attention the old Public Works Director, old Board of Commissioners that he had had conversations that there was some plan in the mix to do a, let's call it a real line of harms road. Where it goes up the canyon to Niva area to make that straight the whole way through there. Do you know, I've never heard of such a thing. I never heard of such a thing. Why I sat in the audience for two years. But that's what he was told. So I, I told him I would check into it to see if there was.
I have not seen anything.
We applied for a grant.
To realign harms?
It was part of, uh, yeah, that, one of the crab grants we submitted. It would realign that one intersection at the far end of it.
Okay. Is that recently or? That was years and years ago.
Decade ago kind of thing. Is that still something that, I guess if we find state or federal money for, we might consider, but it's not something we would consider with our county dollars to fund the whole darn thing kind of scenario.
We will look at it, um, because we are looking at options. We have to submit preliminarily for the new rat of, or rap funding.
We were discussing it when we were both stuck on the side because of the snowplow. So hence brought it up.
We have not, but you know, we're, that's one of the projects we'll evaluate for, we, we had it for harms last time. I think the board chose not to move that project forward for submitting for rap dollars. We'll look at it again. Because there's another cycle coming. So we're looking at the, we'll look at different projects.
Good enough. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you at one.
Yeah. So we're just a few minutes early for emergency services. Jeff, do you have everyone in the room that you need? Would you like?
Say you have staff for HR, come, or, uh, natural resources too.
Okay. Did I miss you? I missed you, Ron. Come on up. So you get for hiding in the back.
Jeff, keep trying to steal my chair.
I know there's a natural resources update today. I would have.
It's not.
Not an update.
It's just a discussion. As you know, we've received a significant number of applications for the open natural resource position. You've interviewed twice, um, this last round, there's very little, uh, agreement amongst the commissioner so far on whether there's a third round of interviews that, that should take place or need to take place. So Richard and I've talked a few times and I've had, uh, various levels discussion with you individually. But this is the first time I think we've all five talked about it together. Richard has floated the idea of potentially taking one of the economic development specialists and job sharing between natural resources and their current duties, um, as, as an option to at least move these forward. We have the lead entity. A lot of this has fallen on Richard. To his credit, he's taken that and the Butler Creek. Whatever that one's called. A lot of other reporting, uh, Richard has stepped up and stepped in and done that. So we thought it might be worth the discussion to see if there was any interest in exploring this, um, job sharing between natural resources and economic development between a staff person, um, or not. I don't know if Richard wants to add to it or we'll just kick it over you. See if you have any questions. That's kind of open-ended, but it's just that. Kind of feels like maybe there's a time to have a discussion before we continue to accept applications, if we get any more. Anybody else want to go first?
You have a comment, Mr.?
I can go if you want me to go. I, I have questions in my own head whether the natural resources position is a forty hour a week job. Uh, I'm sure some would argue it is, some might argue it isn't. This would be one way to find out. And this would be one way to help us with the budget. Although we don't pay for that position in the economic development side, we would pay for the natural resources side. So if we're hiring for twenty hours a week instead of forty hours a week. So if we're hiring for 20 hours a week instead of 40 hours a week, uh, that would also save this board some budget decisions that they're going to have to make this year. Um, so I'm in favor of, um, testing the idea.
Mr. Anderson.
So it sounds like there's no alignment between the three of us on who we should have interview. And it's been a while. So we don't even know if we do pick those people, if they're, if they found jobs. So, um, and we have the, um, lead entity meetings coming up and we have to make, uh, those. Otherwise I'm going to be doing those again, um, and I don't have the time right now. So, um, having someone that's, um, in economic development and we've all know where I stand on three economic development employees, um, job sharing, or at least, um, starting through this round so that more importantly, we have someone that, that if we hire someone and they don't work out, then someone has the knowledge to backfill for a while until we go through it again, which would have been nice if, if we weren't in the situation where we had, you know, two, both of our natural resources, you know, being gone on the same day. That's something that could have happened. Instead, we've been in limbo. Um, and with that, the fact that we don't have any interviews signed up, I think we have to move this direction. Um, it is not a hit on the budget because anything that that person does in natural resources was grabs to lead entity is grant reimbursable. Um, and the majority of that position is grant, you know, reimbursable. So that's good. Anything I can do to help, um, at least understand title 18, understand the process, um, the ranking scoring, all of that. Um, if you need me to come to the meetings and, and help the facilitation, I'd, I'd be more than willing to, to help the employee. Um, as I did the previous two that we had hired for the position. So, uh, it's the position that never seems to quit giving. Please from up here.
And I agree with both my seatmates and I think it's perfect timing. It's going to preserve some crucial natural resource things that we have hanging in the wind. It's going to move that position to where it's affordable. And it leaves it for me kind of a blank slate that as we get these under our belt and he learns, then we can pick and choose. Where are we going with the natural resource department? But it keeps, keeps it secure for now and that's what we need. We need to preserve the programs we have.
And then we need to have a conversation. Um, we're coming up in, uh, just a couple of months on, um, well monitoring. And we did not do that the last year. So we've got a gap in our years, um, which is never good for ecology. Um, we have the, the best well monitoring database in the state, uh, by far, um, amongst the counties. And I would hate to have that walk away or lose that. Um, I don't see any, we, for the first many years, it was funded by grants. Um, I don't see ecology continuing to fund it with grants. So it would come out of the, the county's coffers on whether or not we continue that. So.
Well, with what I'm hearing, then I, we, we'll close the posting, um, for the natural resources, um, for now. And I think listening to all three of you, um, talking to Richard, I think one of the advantages to, to what I'm hearing is that, you know, there is some discussion or, uh, I wouldn't say, uh, debate, but differences about the level of staffing for these two positions. And I think this way they'll find their natural balance if, if it always changed this, you know, this isn't, uh, fixed in stone. So I think it's, it's a good process now, especially for the lead entity. And I think with that, that, that should move me out of natural resources. This person will both halves will, will work for Richard. And so I think it makes sense from a management direct perspective that that Richard do that. But one thing that, that we've talked about is I think they're going to need your guidance on natural resources direction above and beyond potentially. Um, the obvious, like the identity program, especially if he's only going to have roughly halftime though, I realize that'll change week to week depending on what's on his plate, but, but I think, uh, they're going to need the direction of the commissioners.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I would hope that as we go on and we the discussion has had amongst the board on well monitoring and whether we want to do that and whether we want to fund that and how much that would cost and, and all those kinds of things. Um, but again, you've been the director of natural resources while we're in this transition. Uh, that it now sounds like we're not necessarily in a transition anymore. So my question for the board is now is Richard now the natural resource person and not Rob or, or what are we making this official now? Or are we still in limbo?
Mr. Anderson.
So, I mean, there's a lot of things that have not been being done in natural resources over the last six months to eight months. As we went through the transition, um, there is all of the legislation that we're not getting the information on that the board used to. Um, there's all of the more important agency actions that we are not getting the information that we need to. Um, all the way from cold water refugia to, uh, Western gray squirrel. I don't even think we were, we were told that the Western gray squirrel was uplisted. We've got issues with wolves. We've got issues with cougars. We've got a whole bunch of policy level upper management decisions that was my original goal is to hire someone that would, that would be spending time on that. I don't know that, um, if Richard has the time, uh, to be working on those kinds of policy decisions when we got all the economic development side as well. Um, so I'm still trying to say like, we're, we're filling a gap here that's immediate and necessary. I don't think we've made the decision if this is the final way that we're going. It sounds like there was no agreement on somebody that was at that level from the board in order for the hiring. It was more of a level, lower level project. Um, specific. But I, there's just a lot of things that aren't being done.
There are, and I think it's a menu that we'll be looking at for the next couple of years. Um, what I was looking for was what can this person fill the gap that we're totally have on our plate right now that we need to fill? Lead entity was on my radar and also the well water monitoring was on my radar. So I would ask that, uh, Jake is more familiar and Richard, if anybody else sees something out there that's hanging in the wind that we need to cover with this position now, let's design it so that they're doing that. And I believe if those legislative items and the agency items could start dropping into his inbox as he becomes familiar with them and discusses them with Richard, they can say, is there something there we should be bringing to the board? Is that information and that you could grow that position, uh, hopefully.
I guess I have questions or concerns now. Because the way I understood that was that we were assigning a 20 hours in economic development, 20 hours in natural resources. But it sounds like the board might have intentions of transitioning them to 40 hours.
Just depend, it's going to take, you know, a year or a couple of years to see how is that time spent? What is the demand of that time?
And I think those emails are currently going to Commissioner Anderson and to, to Richard and to, just to be clear, my role has really only been to authorize invoices and, and sign the time cards. Richard has been actively involved with, with your, um, permission in the ecology grants for the lead entity and Butler Creek and other issues. And then Commissioner Anderson has spent a significant amount of time as well as really the person that understands the content more than Richard and I. So it's been kind of.
But that brings up my question, why? I guess in my head, why do we still have you signing invoices and them happen? It doesn't make any sense to me.
Correct.
And we have a director sitting right there.
And that much better than I did. That's why I was hoping that we could.
I mean, you don't write legislation and lobby and, and.
I, I think we're at that Y in the road.
Thank you.
And that's what Richard was designed for in the beginning, when we started having these conversations with you, were those two departments under, under your lead. Uh, so I think this is a natural segue for me to move that over and, and just start at the bottom.
But we are in agreement.
You said it much better than I did. I didn't want to say, please let me go.
I'd like to thank, uh, you, Rob, for all the time that you've spent working on all the different departments and everything we've put on you, um, over the years. And the, the knowledge that you've had to gain in departments that you didn't know anything about. But, um, you have the wherewithal, the knowledge and the background to, uh, continue to do this good work for us. So thank you very much.
Appreciate that. And, and again, Richard is, is taken on a lot of that, uh, and Bill is out a few times. So he's, he's been great to work with. So thank you, uh, for releasing me of this hat.
Okay.
Gladly handed to Richard.
One more thing accomplished.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Casey.
Yes.
You're always quick, but you always want something.
Yeah, yes. I'm asking permission for verbal to post. Um, the auditor received a resignation for their election, um, clerical position. And so she is looking for verbal to post for the, uh, clerical to position within the election department.
Sounds like we have to fill it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's going to be a lot of elections this year.
Yes, yeah. So we'll get, get that posted.
Great, thank you. So finally to EMS. Director King. Is that where I was at? What is? Oh, it is. Okay.
DM, yes.
There we go. D E M, got it.
You want this chair?
Boy, everybody's willing to give up their seats today, huh?
Sure.
Well, good morning. We'll start off as usual. Nothing on your consent agenda today. Public safety radio system. Uh, first an addition that I wanted to note, I was, uh, asked and did provide radio system use training to the EMT course students on Wednesday, January 31st. And under performance and functionality, it, it says it's operating normally. Um, I struggled with that because it's operating correctly without any service interruptions to the users, but it is operating in a temporary, um, mitigation status from our winter storm damage. I'm still working very hard to get permanent uh, repairs done and equipment purchased and delivered and so on and so forth.
Jeff, would you say that that is normal now, considering we have an issue every month that normal is no longer having it being perfect?
Not to the level that this storm created damage. Yes. Now that there's always something that I have to deal with. Yes. The, uh, the radio system and its associated systems and equipment is, is at the age that things are going to continually present challenges. And I have issues with them, uh, generators being one. That's one of the things on my list here. So those smaller residential backup generators that were purchased to save money in the original project are now failing more and more frequently. They're not just designed for this purpose. Anywhere from 10 to 13 years old, depending, because we went from the old, old system to the multicast system. Where we added a, a certain number of sites and those sites were mostly those, um, I guess, residential backup style generators, not a commercial generator. And so some of those, like I said, are in the 13, 12 and 13 year old age for those sites. And then when we built out to simulcast, um, that system went online September of 2013. So, and there was a number of those generators in that.
How big a generator are we talking? Are we talking like a ton to 3,000? Or are we talking a generic 12,000 or?
Yeah, so in between, uh, the, the ones that are problematic, um, are in the seven to 12 KW range. They sit out in a plastic box.
They're not movable. They look like an AC. They aren't there up there. They're not transportable.
So it would be what a, a person would put for their home backup. Yeah. If you chose to do that as, as an automatic failover for power outages. Um, so they are high end residential. They are not commercial. They're not designed to stand up to what we use them for.
Our commercial generators went down in the storm too.
Only due to power outages, not failures on themselves. We only have three of those in our system. Three of the, what we would consider public safety grade, uh, generators installed appropriately out of 12, well, SADIS, sorry, it was online, uh, at that point. So four now.
No, I, I was talking throughout the county, our, our other commercial generators went down as well. So.
Yes, I, that was in the background. I heard that. Yes, I dealt with a little bit of that, the jail and public works. Yes, and those are aged as well.
Do our.
Available for some.
Do our generators do a weekly start automatically as well too? Okay.
Yeah, we have weekly test runs for all of our generators. And a couple of bullet points down, we've resolved the, a couple, uh, the issues that we had post storm. Um, as you can see there, uh, Bickleton site generator was in failure post storm. Uh, that's one of those, um, residential grade generators that is we've had trouble with over and over again. And I will have to decide at what point I'm going to make a strong recommendation that we need to replace that because it is costing us more money than we are saving in the original purchase of it. That's why it was done back then. But.
Is the maintenance person that comes up with those local, we got to pull them out of 40%?
Um, they're regional and it depends on who's available. The, the two times I had to send the generator tech to Bickleton in the last month. It came out of the tri cities once and central Oregon the other time. Yeah. But that's part of the reason I contract with them is because they're a large enough organization that they should always have somebody available. Just depends on where they come from.
Matter of service fee is.
Yep, travel time and all that. And then the radio technicians had to go there once because when it, when the generator failed upon uh, grid power failure, then it tripped the breakers and, and they have to go deal with that, uh, and restart all that radio equipment. So that was a significant, uh, issue and caused about six hours of downtime at that site. Where that site was offline. No, no public safety radio service to that area. The click it tab generator is one of those commercial generators that we installed a few years ago when we upgraded that location, uh, that was resolved by my support contractor in the end.
Do you remember what the cost was for the commercial?
The initial cost for that.
Well, the, the purchase price cost of the generator for the click it tab.
Uh, no. Yeah. I wouldn't be comfortable giving you even a rough guess. But I can get that for you.
When we, when we go to buy another one, I'll find out.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, the annual tier one preventative maintenance work has been completed, given all the, uh, work that we've been tasking our radio technician with. He hasn't um, formalized it and sent it to me yet. So I'm still waiting on that, but I don't fault him for that because he's been taking all the priority work that we have for him. The stacker beaut site was most affected by the winter storm. Uh, it created significant service outage, uh, for the laptop radio site, which serves the trot lake valley. Thankfully there is, um, overlap in most of the trot lake valley that comes from other sites. And so communications with those first responders in the trot lake valley weren't compromised to the point that it caused any issues that we're aware of. There was no time that anybody was put at additional risk because they didn't have that local site. But we were on edge for a while for that reason. But all of that resulted from the stacker beaut, um, storm damage mostly from accumulating ice or ice falling and damaging antennas. We had four different antennas affected at the stacker beaut site. We did emergency repairs. It was either the day after the damage occurred or, or the second day after. I've, I've lost track of all that. But I was part of that team that went there and tracked vehicles and, and made those emergency repairs while the situation was critical. Um, now, like I said before, we're working through the process of getting those temporary repairs made permanent. Other things that were still pending, uh, resolve stacker beaut, um, fan replacement prior to the storm. Gogotha beaut, that's still pending. Gogatha Butte, that's still pending, I imagine Benton County um emergency management and emergency communications is in the same boat we are. Last month has been hard on everybody in our region, so when that gets done, I'll start moving forward with the repairs we need to make there so that site is secure. Uh same thing with the Diamond Gap Cellular Service Project, um that's pending, everything else. The radio site lease agreements, um still working with P U D on their expansion. And still working with Blue Mountain and K V H as sub tenants at Juneau Point. A little frustrated right now with Blue Mountain because they've not. Been responsive, uh so at some point I will have to consult prosecuting attorney, but if if they don't renew that lease or don't respond to us. Um to renew that lease, then. Gotta have to give them a vacate order, never had to deal with that before, so. But they've just changed hands from Gorgonet to Blue Mountain in the last year, so we'll see. But just so you're aware, some. Somebody calls you up and says, what's Jeff doing? That's what I'm doing. Interlocal agreement with Citywide Salmon is now in their approval process, they said that they wanted to run it through their city council and sign it, usually I. Put it through our process first, but uh it is moving forward on their end and I thank um Police Chief Edner for making that happen. Any questions about the radio system? I hope that my regular updates on things that were happening. Was sufficient, I didn't get any feedback, otherwise I'd try to keep you in the loop as I can.
No, your communication's been awesome and thank you for all of your hours, it's not even countable.
You're welcome. SADIS Pass project that uh Jeff mentioned that uh Public Works is still involved in that as that project isn't finished officially. That camera, I've been made aware, the second camera, I believe it is, has been sent back to the uh vendor and is on warranty, so. They're continuing to work on that, but Day Wireless has put a lot of time and energy into figuring out why that. Those uh cameras aren't working and getting it resolved and even in the middle of of storm conditions, they went and tried to get it resolved. Nine one call taken. Public Safety Dispatching, turn it over to Phil.
Good morning, um so um as you can see, I brought one of our communications officers with us, this is um Cadence Bergman. And um she is um the last of our full-time um trainees that was released recently. And um did you guys get a copy of that? I will pass this copy. So one of the things.
Thank you.
So one of the things and it's down in another bullet point and I'll talk about it now, one of the things we've been working on is, as I mentioned before, cross-training. In our positions and I guess you can call them other duties as assigned, but we have different tasks that we have to complete for either the nine-one-one state grant. Uh or other requirements that we have, so. The philosophy that we're following is the cross-training shifting forward and leveling up. So that means um and Cadence has been doing that as well, giving every opportunity to our communications officers to train for a position above or beyond them. Um give them the most training that we can give them to do other tasks and other duties, um like I mentioned before, add to the point of. Training my replacement so that if anything was to happen, anybody's absent, anything like that, other people can step in. Um so Cadence, just coming out of training, has taken on um. Public education, which is one of our requirements for the state brand, um and she has lots of energy and lots of ideas. Um so this is a thank you letter we received from the F F A. I just asked her, you know, we we got a uh request from the F F A here at Golden Dell High School to help them with a project. Um can you make a presentation? And by the, I think it wasn't even lunchtime, middle of the day, she had a PowerPoint ready to go and a a game. Set up so that the kids can answer questions, uh Jeopardy game and make that happen, so it was ready within that same shift, ready to go. Um and she was stoked about it, so we went out to the F F A, to the uh middle school, we presented um. Personally, in my opinion, again, uh some of the facts that Cadence included, like um. Nine-one-one in the United States came to be in nineteen thirty-eight, nine-one-one in Clickitad County came to be in nineteen ninety-six. And I was thinking as we were presenting, you know, those are random facts that middle school age kids could care less about. They were included in the game portion that we played and the kids were able to log in on their computers on their desk. And participate and play Jeopardy with us. Needless to say, many of them knew those answers when they came up. So the information presented the way it was presented by Cadence, um just. It it went through and stuck with them, at least for the little bit that we had them. Um and so now they, the middle school kids are working on. Mimicking our presentation in a way and taking that to the elementary um and presenting themselves, so. We did one presentation that's gonna carry on.
Uh it's on the Facebook post.
About it and I was uh very pleased at the public outreach you guys are doing, so thank you.
And and so we are taking advantage of their energy to to move forward with that, so. So yeah, so again, Cadence is is to be applauded for that. Review applications for casual communications, so we are still in the process of reviewing those with everything that's happened over the last few weeks. We've been a little delayed, but that's still coming, so we can move forward with that. Proud Discipline Training Task Force, we've met twice. Uh now going on a third time this month and uh that is going well, communicating with all the other agencies and figuring out some training capabilities there. Um so as I mentioned, the the philosophy to leveling up, um in the next. Um few weeks, we're gonna continue having meetings one-on-one uh with each of our communications officers to s- um find out their interests, what they're interested in, what they wanna learn. And what their ultimate goals are um for their entire career so that we can provide that training. And for lack of better wording. Taking advantage of that capability of their knowledge of of getting them ready so that they can. Provide a better service to the county, uh but at the same time reward them with a a clear path for their careers, so. Along with that, um I believe you guys received the uh an invitation, we are gonna be hosting a couple of trainings at our upcoming team meeting. I actually had the opportunity to meet um, I believe it's Jill and John Plush. I I've been providing a training using their story to our communications officers, our new communications officers. Um and I use it to to um train advocacy for for their caller, how we need to advocate for our caller and make sure that. They get the best care possible from our first responders, preparing our first responders, whether that's somebody um in a um. Medical need, the law enforcement need, or even a mental health capacity, what we can do to de-escalate the situation and prepare. You know, law enforcement, medics or fire to enter that situation and and make sure we were not escalating anything and prepare them in in that response. So I I've I've shared their story numerous times, I got to meet them, they're great people. And so they are going to be um presenting to us uh virtually um while we meet and sharing their story. And we extended the invitation to you and um to our law enforcement partners and other partners. Because it's it's a great story about how you should do your best. The tragic events that happens when you are not at your best is what resulted to their. So it should be great. We're also having um Clickitad County School Administration from uh the E S D and the superintendent from White Salmon presenting to us. On standardized emergency response plans and protocols um that they will be adapt adopting at the schools. And uh hoping that other schools also adopt those protocols, um and it sets a a common language for all emergency response. Should that emergency happen at the school, uh a lot of, a lot of things come down to communication, so trying to set that up so that. Uh we have the best possible outcomes. So I mentioned the uh middle school um F F A project that's ongoing, um we have already plans, Cadence already is in the communication with uh. The primary school, we have a teacher that uh inquired and that is what we're hoping to get more into the schools, back into the schools. So we've had, in this occasion, the teachers are inquiring and requesting us, um so we hope that uh as we continue, that's gonna grow more and more, so. She is currently working on um making that presentation for the middle school now for um fourth grader friendly, so. We'll be doing that hopefully in the next weeks or month. Next gen nine-one-one, we are also looking, um as you may imagine, every technology is changing, uh we've implemented multiple. Uh new technologies in in our center from the phone system a couple of years ago. Rapid S O S, which um brings us uh GPS location, similar to what you would use for Uber, Uber Eats and things like that, that it pinpoints location using. Multiple existing systems including uh internet modems and cell phone uh towers to to give you more accurate. Uh so we've been implementing that, um next gen is coming up with more technology, including videos, photographs. Uh we have the tax now, um and so we are trying to stay. In front of that and and be prepared for what's to come uh in the future, so we don't wanna be. That rural county that is back in the fifties with technology, especially when it comes to nine-one-ones. Uh and a big component to that is obviously the training and uh. Our staff and bringing that technology, um which is a very, very rapidly changing, uh creates a problem in training and staying up to date. A challenge because as you know, nobody likes change, so we're we're trying to make it as as best as we can and and stay in front of that for everybody, so. The other uh providing training, we're still providing training, uh we were gonna be training um. Setting up some new classes, those got delayed because of the winter storm, um so we will be rescheduling those. We've attended several sessions with the county EMS and fire, um and we are working on setting more of those up as well. And continuing to um participate in the um state nine-one-one dispatch trainings and standards and certifications board that is still not set as to what. Those are gonna be yet, so those are still in in the works, so. But that, I'll send it back to Jeff unless you have any questions.
Uh I will mention that the latest that I heard, our our lead that is our representative for the state standardization. For nine-one-one dispatch, um so that they're now. Debating or leaning towards a state academy, similar to law enforcement, similar to what Oregon has. What is it, they send them in Oregon, they send them away for three or four weeks?
Yeah, four in March, yes.
So that's, that's the latest we've heard out of there and um. That is, got some issues related to it, as they take them away from us and train them and things that don't apply to us and then we have to come back and retrain them. That's a struggle that law enforcement had had for decades. So that's why we are continuing to be involved in that state level uh process to create standardized and certifications. So we want to make sure we're looking out for ourselves.
Yes, sir. Where are we at um for overtime um so far this year and uh how many positions do we have um that are still available?
So with Cadence uh successfully completing training, uh we are fully staffed, fully trained. So that is reducing our overtime budget significantly. It didn't come prepared with any numbers on year-to-date overtime and I don't wanna put my staff on. A spot, but if somebody had ballpark, I would say that yeah, we've been. We've only been one person out of the schedule for a little while already, so that every, every person. That we have in the schedule out of the uh ten regulars decreases that overtime as we presented uh in our staffing proposals. That that is the biggest challenge because somebody has a day off for any reason whatsoever, we can't just leave that seat open, we have to pay that to be filled. The closer we come to being fully staffed. Fully trained and staffed with ten comms officers and our casuals that are available. The the better that overtime gets.
And we just had on Sunday, we had a another communications officer that was out on medical leave, returned to work. So uh everybody is back to work as of this week, so that should uh we should see some drastic changes on that.
Yeah, I forgot about that, we had one up for four months.
And I hope that's helping you.
Yes, I kind of in a way, yes. And and it's helping, I I'd say it it is helping everybody as well in in filling shifts and and. Not getting burnt out, so we're on a recovery process and we're taking advantage of of moving forward with that.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, and the merger fun one oh seven into one thirty-five was implemented successfully on January one. There were some things, you know, I say successfully on the high level, there were some things that my staff and the auditor's office and Jen are working through. Uh in the, in the details of that, but I'm being told that it is, has been successfully implemented and should continue that way. Oh yeah, emergency man, so any other questions on nine-one-one dispatch? Okay, emergency management program, um part of what uh Phil was talking about with the standardized emergency response plan came directly out of our. Collaboration with the schools and their emergency planning working group, um you can see there some of the uh things that we've been doing to support that. Uh we also um. Surprise, provided information, uh when was that, on January eleventh? There was a report of two individuals with weapons at one of our schools uh in the county and uh. As had been requested by the school districts that we send them a notification. So that all schools in the county would have a heads up that something was going on, if you remember back to uh earlier last year when we had the swatting incident at Columbia High School. And social media and phones, email and everything else blew up. And none of the other schools had any idea what was going on, that caught them off guard and put them on the defensive and without any information, so. This was the first time we got to um. Exercise this and and I'm, you know, I only committed to what we are able to do because when the event like that is going on. We're focused on that event and notifying people that are not involved, but would help them if they had the information, uh is definitely a secondary priority for us. But it went well, it just so happened that um. Emergency Management Program Coordinator was in the building along with myself when this occurred, we were able to get that message out. And for their own situational awareness to make decisions on what they would do with their um facilities. And and what part of their emergency response plans they might activate, uh they were made aware in a timely manner and that helped them, we got positive feedback from that, so. We'll continue to do that as. As we're able, but steps forward for everybody's. Best response in an emergency is what we're looking for and we're happy to. Best response in an emergency is what we're looking for and we're happy to collaborate with them. We're still continuing to work on getting access to all the school cameras, the dispatch. And for the responders in the field, um, and and the other bullet point that have. Been listed there for a while, those are just ongoing things that we're continuing to do. Working with the schools to improve their security. And as that incident on the eleventh proves, it is necessary. Those folks uh, that were on the school grounds, you know, were able to be found and contacted by law enforcement and that was resolved. But they were in fact, running around on school grounds and doing inappropriate things. Training and exercises, we're continuing on that process, um, our mapping, computer mapping system, we had a very uh, good training. Back on the third and fourth involving that. Getting our. Emergency management volunteers that training so we can use those mapping services in an emergency to the most effectiveness. The grants, uh, the biggest thing to note there is under the twenty-three S H S P. New information just came, I saw the email yesterday, the funds that FEMA had put on hold for the two. Um, P U D projects um, have been released, so now we're gonna get to start that process or months and months behind. So we'll probably have to have an extension on that grant um, to facilitate the pass through for the P U D and their two. National priority area projects, but those were approved by FEMA after a lengthy delay. Um, the S U A S team activities are listed there, continuing training uh, and follow up to improve. Our service provided to all emergency responders. And then the winter storm, I said you you know most of this, I kinda summarized, um, I gave you regular updates in various ways. Um, both as a group and individually, uh, one thing that has transpired since I wrote this. Submitted it so for public to see is that under phone and internet service allergies. Uh, occurring intermittently for weeks, that uh, final permanent restoration by Century Link. Uh, was done Friday, February ninth, this is last Friday. Which was the result in the end of a fifteen day intermittent failure. Um, and coordination effort with Century Link and our local technicians. Once I was able to get in direct contact with our local technicians, things did improve immensely, but until then, it was a very frustrating and. Time consuming.
You said permanent fix and Century Link in the same sentence.
Well, they 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 put their primary systems back online.
Did that fix the issues for the local residents as well when they fixed ours or were they separate?
I won't say it fixed everything, but it should have fixed the majority of them. Both phone circuits and internet. And the, and the internet for most folks should have started coming up probably a few days prior to Friday the night. The phone circuits, I said, it wasn't just our phone circuits into dispatch, the whole building and to one of the public radio sites. Yes, it was a good portion of the communities and I impressed that upon um. Century Link and Lumen Support, every time I talk to them, they've got many, many hours of recordings. Of me telling them that it was not just about the, the two circuits that I was complaining about and had to take it open for. And the internet services, three of them going into our building for public safety, um, that were down, it was the fact that when that system failed. The public couldn't call nine one one because their landline service was down, especially in communities like Glenwood. That that don't have it and and if they had Century Link phone service and internet service, which they usually connect their cellphones to the wifi for the internet. Because they don't have cellular service and there was no way they could call for help. And and I reiterated a few times that I I hope somebody listens to this recording in your office. And when the state looks into whether they're going to uh, you know. Settle with fines and so on, that they listen to this and understand the true ramifications to public safety that were created by this. Long term outage.
Do we have, I'm sorry, do we have uh, backup internet capabilities at. Emergency management, I mean, I know if phones and internet are down, someone in Glenwood can't call, but are we covered? With a Starlink backup or anything like that?
We have limited ability to to do that at this time and we deployed those. And Phil and I both worked on workarounds in the moment and mitigation efforts to provide backup phone and internet. Uh, Starlink was one that we put in place for a backup internet connection for the radio system alarms. And remote access for our technicians, cause that's when that went down. We couldn't even tell that their phone lines were failing to the click at that radio site because we couldn't get the alarms. Because their internet was also down and then the phones into dispatch, Phil worked with uh, the same company that provides. The service for the nine one one trunk um, to provide us with backup phones. And we're, we're now exploring more useful. Redundant systems and services that will have migrate desires and automatic failover. Because when these things started to fail, um, we weren't contacted and our systems weren't set up or. They're not designed to send us a notification, so when the phone service to dispatch failed, unless they tried to make an outgoing call. They wouldn't know it and it was intermittent for for weeks, it would come and go, so unless they tried to make an outgoing call, they wouldn't know it was down. And if somebody tried to call in, they would get a busy signal and unless they knew that the uh. Backup cellphone like law enforcement or other first responders have those numbers and and called that number. We had no idea that the phone service was out because the phone just didn't ring and same thing with the internet. Go down and at the point where. Um, those radio system alarms are supposed to come through their internet connection, we wouldn't get them, so you didn't know that things were failing. It was a cascading event and I have already been, like I said, Phil and I worked on it throughout the process. Through the winter storms and after, um, been in contact with um, the I T manager. At length and we think we have a very good uh, start on a plan for. Providing. Primary and redundant services with automatic failovers and alarms that we will know that the primary has failed. For both phone and internet services to not only emergency management, but to then to the entire county. Uh, offices. And we're just, we've had lots of conversations in the middle of this event. Um, but we're just scratching the surface and hope to provide you with a proposal in the near future for how we wanna restructure that. And get some. Some reliable services outside of what we currently use. Um, and redundancy in those services from other providers for a long term solution.
If I, if I may add, one of the few challenges that we found is the um. The processes of forwarding calls, in this case, you know, lines are not working to forward the calls to an uh. The different lines that we set up with uh, the other provider. Also filed with Century Link as a result of uh, they do not forward calls or do that process other than office hours. Uh, so we found some of those things that we take for granted because we've never had to do it, but we knew the capability is there. Uh, we've done it in the past during service updates and forward those, those calls to other numbers. But in the middle of the night when we're. Down there trying to figure things out, um, they're not working and they won't come out. That's, you know, so so some of those challenges, but uh, and like Jeff mentioned, I I I will think uh. Our I T director, cause um, he, he came in and helped a, a couple of times to get some of those workarounds happening. So that was great to have there as well.
Oh, he's not here, I can't make, he, he meant the managers. No slide against. No slide against the director, but the manager was very helpful.
Have we submitted anything to the U T C in terms of documentation um, or this outage? And what it what occurred?
Not yet.
But we plan on.
Just cleared dealing with it, um, yes, I, I reported it to state nine one one. I think within three or four days of it starting and realizing the magnitude and the extent. As it went on and we'll go through that process with them as it primarily affected, you know. It didn't affect the nine one one lines, other than people couldn't call them. But, which is bad enough, but our nine one one phone trunks never went down. To make sure everybody's clear, but the state nine one one office is very interested and wants to help us follow up. On how it affected our ability to deal with the nine one one calls that we were receiving. Both in the ability to transfer those calls uh, to other agencies. If they weren't for us or in the public safety radio side where we lost that site repeatedly and intermittently. We can't dispatch nine one one call, you know, in that case, so yes, we will be following up and. Take those appropriate steps. Um, one last thing, there's nothing else on that, just the winter storm, there were so much that went on for weeks. Uh, you know, power outages and so on, that um, I just summarize all that. Uh, the resolution, uh, declaration of an emergency. We do have to circle back around at a certain point and rescind that, so I'll be reaching out to you when I think that's appropriate, but right now. I'm still dealing with the aftermath and and. Two of our sites need serious attention and finish those um, permanent repairs. So that we're still not in a compromised position, you don't have any redundancy. Or for two of our, well, actually it affects three sites. So, I'm gonna get that done first under the emergency declaration and then I'll come back to you for a rescinding of that. Thank you, all of you and your staffs for helping us through this process when we were maxed out.
Oh, sorry, thank you so much, Jeff and your staff.
I would agree with that and I look forward to seeing your presentation. On what we can do to put in some redundancies to. Mitigate for what could potentially be a very bad scenario.
And great job cadence and keep up the good work.
So we are a little bit early, uh, we have about. Less than half an hour for executive session. Is there anything you'd like to move forward to?
Uh, I can give you a couple of board updates. Uh, the insurance board uh, was set to have a conference and a board of directors meeting in Tri-Cities. Uh, in March, the hotel got flooded, so now it's on Zoom, which woo-hoo, I don't have to go to Tri-Cities. So other than. I don't know that that's a difference for us, cause it's not a budgetary cost, but uh, that's, that's an update from there. Uh, the left board met, uh, we have a. Request uh, from a left member to pay for. Um, services, the board has not taken a decision and will meet again on whether it does pay for those services. Um, but the current left budget is, I believe, a hundred and ten dollars in this budget. And fifty-five thousand in sheriff budget to pay for all left services, which is law enforcement and firefighters, um. Retirement disability type stuff, the ask for that. One ask. Comes out to roughly two hundred and seventy-two thousand. So, um. We will have another meeting with uh, the full board there and um. See what the decision of the board is. And then I'll let you know.
Good, thank you. Mister Anderson, seeing you have in commissioner updates or?
Has everyone had a chance to review the um, F E I S um, for pump storage? Um, that should have hit your email this last week, um, I read it on Saturday, it took a good portion of the day, it was a hundred and fifty pages long, but. It sound, it seems to be that um. The F E I S is going to continue to move forward, um, that they can um, move into the next. Um, stage, um, I was pleasantly surprised with, with most of the, the mitigation and the requirements. Um, for cultural resources and and what, what FERC decided upon. Um, I have heard rumors that um, an environmental group will be suing, um, so that's, that's too bad. Um, and but it's, it seems like it was, it was really good news in terms of the, the movement forward on that overall project. What the requirement, so if you haven't had a chance to review it, it's.
It was a surprise and that was good.
Yeah, it was, it was positive development.
Anything else for you? For me, if I may, um, we do have the W S U contract, um. On our calendar for this afternoon and I'd just like to remind you that there was a menu list of things that we could pick from. I think um, with the cancellation that of Hannah's contract, we can move forward. And pick from that menu and make some decisions, what we could advise W S U that they could help us with. And we will not be able to move forward with the four H contract until we make those decisions, so. I would hope we could come to resolve today and give some advice to W S U what we need help with, if you see anything on that menu list and. Talking with other counties over what W S U provides to them, it's a really, really wide menu, so maybe even if you don't see things on that list. Maybe your suggestions to me and I could forward that back to W S U and they could consider it, there is one county that even. Um, uses their W S U extension contract to fund a person. That does counseling for the courts for families and children. And so I think it's a really, really wide variety, uh, and I asked how did they come up with that and she said W S U actually came down and sat with them. And had conversations and identified things that maybe they were lacking in their county that W S U might be able to provide. So I don't think we're limited to the menu that came to us, if there's gaps that you see, we can certainly forward it to W S U as a suggestion.
Did W S U hire their own extension agent, um, uh, or a specialty or so, or outside, or how are they providing those resources with?
Um, it was a person like Hannah, but had that background. And so they, they all have different specialties that are willing to come to different counties and do those jobs and assist those counties and so when. One pops up, then they pick from their list of people that have those specialties.
So for clarification, W S U wants us to enter a new contract. For the extension agent position, but they don't currently have an extension.
They do, they have a list of extension agents, but it depends on what we need. So they would ask that person with that expertise if they have the time and would like to take the contract on and provide that service for us. They kinda field that specialty person for us.
But they wouldn't move down here and live in the community and everything else like we usually have with our extension agent.
And I don't know that, you know, you don't, I don't know who is on their list that might be in our area already. Or how they would provide the service we need, it depends on what we pick.
Right, but we have to sign the contract.
Right, but we don't.
Contract, we need to know, eventually, I'm assuming we would know. What service we're getting.
Yes, once they find that person, they find our need, they find that person, then they would present a contract uh, for us. And if we approve it, we sign it and along with that, the four H contract is a portion to that contract, they're not separate, they're entangled together.
So, I know this is coming up on the discussion, but. I just wanted to throw it out there, so much of what the W S U extension agents do is deal with our partner organizations um, and and groups and so. Our partner organizations um and, and groups and so. So how would we get to the point without having like a, a workshop and inviting all those groups in of? What do you want to see WSU to do? I don't want to pick from a list and forget somebody. Um, when we looked at like we saw what Hannah did and there was, she touched on all these different little. Pieces all over through different communities and organizations and groups.
But I guess I, I would. I would say that if we already have a ton of groups providing a specific issue. Uh, well, well, let's just say the childcare group with WAGA. Unless you don't think they're doing an adequate job, why do we need WSU to get involved? We don't need to reinvent the wheel and have multiple people doing the same.
And I think what we need to do is erase the slate. Those were services that we've had in the past, those were services that were very different than what Susan Kerr did her, her time when she was with us. And I think uh it's up to the county now to see a gap. And say, hey, we could find a person that can fill that gap and we have the funds available. Why don't we ask WSU if they can fill that gap? We don't, we don't have to go back to everything Hannah was providing or doing or engaged in. And I agree with Mister Christopher, a lot of the things I see were overlap, there was a lot of overlap in economic development that was. Two and three times that we don't need that and I think if we spent the time going through it, we'd identify it, but I think. Um, I don't think it's gonna take a very long conversation um. To figure out where have we got a gap, we talk about gaps all the time. And um I've, I've sent the list to human resources too and said, what do you see as a gap? What, what does anybody see as a gap that potentially we could suggest to them and they could fill for us? Um, and I know these may not be gaps that, but point in case we keep talking about uh. Document retention or uh document shredding or are there things? Physically that our county needs that we could utilize that money and fill some of those gaps. I see our Mister Prosecutor's coming early, so.
I will, I will bring the list. That I believe is sitting on my desk, if not, I'll have to reprint it.
And if you think of something else, put it on the list. Yeah, that's awesome. Good afternoon. So, um. We are at eleven o'clock almost, um. And would, do you have everybody with you that you would like to go fifteen minutes early? Would you be available? We were filling time, we got done a little bit of, okay, I appreciate it, so. Uh, we are at the portion of our meeting uh that we're going to be visiting with elected official for. Reports and updates, our prosecuting attorney, David Cannell, pending issues, updates, some of which may qualify for executive session. And in accordance with RCW forty-two point thirty point one one zero pren one or pren. One pren I to discuss threatened and pending litigation issues of a general nature will be discussed in open session. And thank you for coming over.
That mean nothing, we don't have anything for open session, everything's executive only?
Okay, and do we need to close then for executive session, everyone?
We just need to know how long.
How long would you like? Okay, so we will be starting at eleven o'clock. And resume at eleven fifteen unless we extend.
Yep, just closing Zoom.